I'm waiting for it to go.
I can take a minute.
Just waiting for the internet here. I don't think it's going yet.
No, I need a minute to breathe.
All right, I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It's November fourteenth. It is six o'clock PM. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any justice or law.
Are there any additions to the agenda?
There is. Under eight point one, under personnel, if we could please change the effective date of Jess LaFrance's appointment from ten twenty-five to ten twenty-eight to align with payroll.
Any other additions or considerations? May I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
I'm moved.
I'm sorry, I was amended. Minor detail.
I'm moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October ninth?
I'm moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tonight's consent agenda is three point one through four point one. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent?
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that brings us to tonight's Nightlight. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Arquette and Ms. Thomas as they present the Nightlight Awards.
Okay, so September was Suicide Prevention Month, and Ms. Reynolds, one of our PE and health teachers, decided on her own to organize a few different events to help promote awareness of the topic. She even found upperclassmen and student leaders to join the efforts by acting as mental health ambassadors. So first, Ms. Reynolds created daily forum announcements which provided facts about suicide awareness and prevention. The announcements were meant to destigmatize mental health conversations around the topic of suicide. One of the roles of the student ambassadors was to read the prevention message in forum. And having students read this was a great way to get other students to listen because the message was coming from their peers. And each announcement ended with the following: As always, if you or someone you know may be experiencing suicidal ideations or thoughts, please tell a trusted adult as soon as possible. Throughout all these conversations, just know that you are all important, you are all loved, and you are all integral building blocks to the foundation of our HCS community. And you are all needed in order for our HCS community to shine as bright as it does. Then at the end of the month, Lauren and the ambassadors created a project in which students were encouraged to share a statement on the topic of why life is worth living. And students placed their whys on sticky notes, and all the notes were ranged in a heart on the wall for students to see as they went to class each morning. And to kick off that why project, Lauren also, you know, on her own time, made a video of mental health ambassadors filling out their sticky notes and shared that with all of the students in forum. So thank you to Mrs. Reynolds for going above and beyond to educate the students on an important health-related topic. Thank you.
So tonight, I'd like to highlight our speech department. Both of them together collaboratively make a wonderful addition to HCS as a whole and in particular are really important to our elementary students as well. And individually, they have brought a wealth of knowledge to our school. So I'd like to, as a team, you're amazing, and also individually, I'd like to highlight some of the specific things that you've done for our school. So our first member of the speech department is Robin Donaty. So I'm so honored to recognize our exceptional speech therapist, Robin Donaty, a longstanding member of our school community. Over the years, Robin has continued to be an integral part of the MTSS Committee, which was previously known as the RTI Committee. Not only does she share her expertise in speech and language development, but she's also diligently taken and organized notes to ensure student support seamlessly follows them from year to year, which is a huge feat. So special thanks for every single year really participating in that. Her contributions provide a strong foundation and support to our primary team, and her consistent efforts make a lasting impact on both our students and staff. Her dedication and hard work continue to make a meaningful difference in the lives of our students, teachers, and the success of our school community. So thank you, Robin. The next member of our small but mighty speech department is Caitlin Herzendorf. Caitlin is a newer addition to our speech department, and I'm really proud to recognize Caitlin as a dedicated speech therapist. Caitlin has recently completed a certificate program in assistive technology and not only has that been a personal professional development goal of hers, but she has been willing to share that in a lot of different meetings, forums, with teachers and kind of spread the wealth of her new knowledge, which we appreciate. Additionally, she's also sent out a survey to teachers, really asking for input in how she can assist in supporting the needs of our students here as well. Additionally, Caitlin has also provided assistance with assessments wherever needed in addition to providing classroom collaboration and support. As a valued member of our elementary steering team, she also contributes to school-wide initiatives with her input and feedback. So I really thank you, Caitlin, for your dedication and contributions to our school community. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna get all three of you in the back for a picture. That brings up Mr. Arquette. Your recognition, team recognition.
So the two people who might not know this information already have left, so. But in case you didn't know, the Boise Sockr team was named a co-section three, oh, overtime draw against Copenhagen. The rules state that they had to go with penalty kicks to determine who moved on to state play. Unfortunately, we did not succeed at the penalty kicks to move on, but they were crowned co-section three class eight champions. That's the first section three championship for girls soccer since two thousand and one. The Boise Sockr team was crowned section three class eight champions with a three-two win over Faith Heritage. The team then moved on to regional crossover game against South Corcoran, and they won that game four zero. So tomorrow, they will play in the final four against Naples from section five, which is down in Middletown, New York. So they're taking off right after forum tomorrow. We're gonna have a goodbye for them as they head out and wish them luck. And if they win tomorrow, they will be playing for the state championship on Friday.
Saturday.
Saturday. And I'll leave this for thirteen years since they had a going to the final four.
Yeah, I think so. At least.
Congratulations. Thank you. That brings us to our, no, it doesn't. It brings us to our district presentations. Some are curriculum presentations. And is there an order for that?
You can go ahead and go anywhere. It's, I think, Tori's.
Well, whoever wants to go.
It's somebody with Tanya. Oh, there she is. You okay? You should be able to click.
Click the link and then. I didn't know if there was a computer with us.
So over the summer, I worked on Earth and Space Science curriculum, which is the brand-new verbiage for Earth science. And so much so that it really, my colleagues and I across the state who are teaching this are like, Earth, space is gonna take us half the year. So it really is Earth and Space Sciences appropriately named. So I, lots to wonder. First, I started with not only NGSS, but of course, New York State had to put a spin on our standards, so we're following the NISLIS standards. And just to give you kind of an outlook of where I'm starting at is they broke down the standard. So the standard would be placed in black on the top. The clarification statement kind of gives a more, what does this kind of mean? New York State added to that red clarification statement. And then we get into our CIPS, DCI, and MCs, and we take a look at what science students are being asked to do. Normally, pre-NISLIS, you really just looked at the disciplinary core ideas, the orange. Now it's not just, do you know this? Yes or no, and why? Now it's can you do? Can you do the science and engineering practices? Can you do the cross-cutting relationships and really see patterns and everything connecting? So it's a very huge shift in science teaching, K through twelve. It's been coming up the pipeline. It's supposed to have been in effect since two thousand and sixteen. They laid out the components, but they really didn't tell us how to fly it, and we're still building that plane as we're flying. So I am in a whirlwind of what do I do next? The bottom part does show where it's connected to other contents, ELA, social studies, math, engineering, et cetera. But this is very ambiguous even if you read the statements. So then I went into the wonder of science with Paul Anderson. He has now made it his duty from a science teacher to become someone to help with professional development throughout the entire state, or the entire country. And this is just a peek as to one of the standards that I'm following. And it goes into detail, more so, of what is some of the vocabulary, what is the contents that I need to teach my students? So I'm just pulling up what we're gonna be looking at after Thanksgiving, so this is my to-be teaching next. But as I look at each individual standard, I said, this doesn't make sense together the way they put it. And again, putting more content on top of what we're. Date, it's even more challenging. So what I ended up doing is taking these ideas and splitting them up into what I'm used to. Look the standards, cut them out, organize them what I thought meant sense, and then including reading, let me just go back, including reading all of these to see what are the details that make sense together. So we can see where we're progressing. I'm trying to make my way through it. I know I'm gonna run out of time. I'm trying my best to not only teach the content, but also teach how to science and engineer. This is my, the blue cards, that blue column is where I know I need to grow as a teacher, and I know our students need to grow because they don't know how to do this successfully at this point. This is a learning curve that is a huge curve, and it's gonna take a lot of, it's gonna be a bumpy ride for everyone. So the science and engineering practices, I have those blue cards up on my board. A lot of times I'll refer to them. This is what we just did. I know that seemed hard, but look at what you just accomplished. You just constructed an explanation for the data that you just came up with. So I'm trying to point out to them that there is a point to some of these things that are, that really is difficult on a day-to-day basis. I have leaned on the new visions program curriculum. Open Siad doesn't really do Earth science justice because when NGSS was first formed, it was Earth sciences sprinkled into everything else. So new visions is a New York City-based curricula, and they really took New York and put together what would help be NGSS and NISLIS aligned for our students. So I've been pulling a lot of that to help me properly expose these students and get them practicing their science and engineering practices. This is just a couple of examples of what new visions and the SCPs are doing. They follow the five E, seven E, sometimes nine E model. So you have explore, explain, evaluate, elaborate, engage. They have all these different Es to help combat any type of standard. You can start really anywhere, they're kind of a circle. What a huge shift is for science is the claim evidence reasoning, the CERs. This is something that we are modeling now, that social studies is using, that English is using, and it's kind of difficult to, for the kids right now, but we're getting there. We're practicing constantly. What is a claim? What does that actually mean? What does the evidence look like? What is good evidence? What is bad evidence? And the reasoning, bringing your science explanation behind it. So we've done a lot of building over these first few months in school. We first identified, and this kind of tags into my middle school friends, but we first identified what are some of the words we're starting to see in our sample cluster questions in the investigations for their new labs? What are words that we know that these kids don't understand or are struggling with? And using the claim evidence reasoning, what does that mean? What are the nitty-gritty details? Just like I did with the standards, what are the examples? And what I decided to do to combat teaching both English and science at the same time is I hung up all these signs in my classroom, and I said, I don't have time to teach you these definitions, so like, I'm gonna ask you what is a qualitative data, and you need to know, just take a look in the room. Like, let's move on. I've got more to go. So I'm teaching, trying to teach both English and science at the same time in that regard. So osmosis. I also spent my time over this summer being tutored a few days, several sessions, actually, from Dr. Penn and Dr. Berry at Colgate, and I'm forgetting her last name, but Dee, who's also in the geology department. Because when I was given the reference table page, and this one specifically, I said, I never learned it. What is this? I don't even know what this content is. So they spent several days going over with me some of the new content that I had to learn to be able to pass on to them. And we ended up opening it up to more and more Earth science teachers who also were in the same predicament in terms of both geology and astronomy. Joe Egan was also a part of our professional development that we worked at, but I helped initiate because I was like, I don't know what I'm doing. So I know that other people don't know what they're doing either. We did find out that this isn't taught until sophomore year in college. So now it's being taught in eighth, ninth, and tenth grade. And so that's also that learning curve where I'm teaching a lot of stuff now at the high school level, and it's a huge shift. Other things I did is I went to some workshops where we looked at the new investigations, and we really ducked our hands and did the investigations as if we were students. So this, I made sure before I ordered, I made sure I had the right-sized instruments. I looked at good instruments on the left and bad instruments on the right before I did my summer's ordering, how to keep things organized. So I had a lot of tricks of the trade essentially over the summer when we were doing these lab investigations. But there's a lot of setup and a lot of materials that were asked from New York State for both Earth and the biology curriculums. Again, more examples of the other lab. This is an example of the rain garden where we work with porosity permeability, and they have a very free rain. Come up with your own independent, dependent variable and make your own experiment. There's no right answers. I know that's gonna be very difficult for my kids to not have a right answer, but as long as you have right justification. So I'm already trying to start that road with them currently. Again, we're gonna do a stream table lab, very open-ended. So we decided to try different sediments, but this is not something I'd replicate. This was really bad. So like, I'm learning from my own mistakes. I know they're gonna learn from their mistakes. So just some different tricks of the trade when it came to the new investigations that are now ticket entrances in order to take the exam. And so all of them, my head is still spinning just like that massive hurricane. But I know that the sun will never stop shining for my lifetime, so.
Thank you.
I have a quick thing.
Yeah?
And I think I'm just answering my own questions. So as a parent whose child is studying this curriculum.
Yes.
My head is spinning just after that. So while there's been some flags and things like that, is this really just a learning thing, and it shouldn't be like, wow, my child's falling behind and things like that?
It's a huge learning curve. And I'm very upfront with the kids. I tell them there are things that I didn't know when I had you two years ago, three years ago, that I know now that I should have taught you in middle school. Because still, things are coming from the state that should have been addressed earlier. So I'm still learning what should have been learned. And I know their deficits, which is a really good plus, because then I could push that background knowledge they should have had on top of the knowledge that they're currently using.
Perfect.
So I'm trying to combat all this.
Thank you, and good luck.
So it seems like there's a lot of push for more skills, methods, like.
True science.
Do you think, if you're trying to get through all of this, and you can, it seems like, are they still gonna get all of those skills, all those abilities, even if they're not getting to all the content?
So that's the beauty of how, let me just go back to the beginning. The beauty of how these are written, every single standard, even though it's all written in black, there has been a lot of PD where you say, design an investigation. Oh, that's a blue. To produce, support simple models of waves, including how the energy wave depends on amplitude. That's the core idea. Sometimes a cross-cutting relationship is not explicit in how it's written in there, but every single black statement has all three of these embedded into that. So no matter what, I'm touching at least one science and engineering practice. So even if I look just here, I see PS4B, PS4A, PS4C. I know that I'm touching A, B, and C, and I'm doing developing and using models, planning and carry-out investigations, using mathematics, analyzing. So they're built in. It's just unfortunately, you know, there's a lot to get through. And we all know that, and we're trying the best we can. Right now, it's slow because this is very brand-new content to them, but I know when there's content that they're more familiar with, I can speed through it a little faster. It's cool.
And all these materials, the schools providing those?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for all the time you put in.
Thank you.
So middle school, we are continuing on from where we were last year, where we identified the new investigations that were in middle school to begin with. We wanted to continue on our work this summer because we realized there's a lot more work that needed to get done with the standards. So we wanted to make sure that we were touching all the standards. We found out that previously, some of the middle school standards were being missed, and so we wanted to avoid that. So we kind of did the same thing, where we took the middle school standards, we cut them, and we went through each of them and said, who's gonna touch this? And so we made sure that everyone knows what standards they're specifically responsible for.
So that's exactly what we did. We took the standards, and now we organize them amongst ourselves to make sure that each grade level, that they were being touched on at some point in their sixth through eighth middle school science career. Then we looked at our individual curriculum, and we made sure we were implementing then the curriculum and the standards as best as possible. If we found that we were not addressing those standards as best as possible, we made some lessons. We didn't get through all the lessons that we wanted to make, but we did implement, or we did start to create some of them to really address the complexity of some of these standards. And then as Tanya talked about, the vocab words and the grade posters, we spent some time looking at the middle school science vocab words, made some posters with definitions so that we could implement those within the school year to make sure that they were prepared for the end. Lastly, we looked at the science test scores for eighth-grade science state tests that they took last year. We looked for strengths and weaknesses within our specific grade levels to kind of see like, okay, they really weren't understanding that or weren't remembering that from the grade level. So that the goal is this year, we can try to hit it a little bit harder so that we can see some progression with those eighth-grade science scores.
All right, so where do we wanna go from there? So like Tanya mentioned with the high school standards, it's now not so much about, do you know the content, but can you apply the content using the science and engineering processes? And, you know, are we emphasizing those cross-cutting relationships? So now that we know that every standard's content is being covered, we really wanna look at how exactly we're implementing those different concepts into our science curriculum and making sure they're adequately practicing those science and engineering practices and really hitting those cross-cutting relationships. In addition, kind of connecting to what Tanya was saying as well, making sure that our sixth through eighth curriculum is really best for parents, students for high school as much as possible, making sure that now that high school's moving on to some new standards and some new practices and cross-cutting relationships as well, we're really preparing kids with the skills and the vocab and the concepts to be as best prepared for high school and as they were. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
It's really inspiring to all work together from like middle school through high school to really kind of create a curriculum for the students all the way through. So that's nice to see.
I think we're very fortunate, being a small school that we can do that, yes, because it's been very helping bouncing ideas off of each other than knowing like, okay, by this grade, they need to know this, to make sure they were just really helping the kids as a whole. Because get them passed on, you know? We want to make sure they're ready for each grade.
We really know what they've done in past classes. We say, oh, remember when you were with, you did this specific lab? I definitely have that knowledge.
I love that you also looked back at the exam to see where the strengths and weaknesses were, not only for you, but for the students.
They came in nick of time. It was like our last day, and the room gave us like the score, and we're like, fine, I'm not looking for it.
Yeah.
So it was really helpful.
And as an aside, one of my PDs, we looked at where we were versus the state, and for the most part, we are way above the state average. But it's still not a good number, but we're above the state average. I don't know if that makes you happy. I know we have room for room, so that's where we're at.
No, but I think you guys are looking at it as a collaborative, but also from all the angles, which is a good thing for our students, right? And that's, that's the end game for all of us, and especially for you, I know, is how can we do our best work to help our students? And so that shows with us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is an extra fancy framing board. Okay, so hi, I'm Tori Kowalski, the high school art teacher. I'm a Tori bookstore, the high school counselor. We actually went to high school together. Is this a hot? In case you didn't know that.
I don't think anybody knew that.
She did send me a bunch. I think you ski club together. I know. So last winter, I'm a part of a really great RPLG group through Madison, Oneida Voces, and Heather Jeralu from Oneida School was hosting a training at the library. at the library, and it was about, uh, graduation requirements and the change in those and how the arts, they're creating like a pathway for students to excel in the arts. Um, and so I had invited Victoria and said, oh, well, you know, let's, we could go look at this and see if we can implement it at our school. Um, so we went last winter, and then it, we realized it was kind of a big undertaking, um, so that we wrote our summer curriculum plans, um, to implement. So it's called the IAAP, the Individual Arts Assessment Pathway in Visual and Video Arts. So what is the IAAP? Um, it's a graduation pathway in which students complete like a locally determined, so, uh, you know, our curriculum, um, three-unit sequence in the arts and demonstrate the reflection of creative works, um, over time that meet, uh, the high school performance indicators from the New York State Learning Standards. So essentially, they would take three classes, so a unit would be a year-long course, so they could take it through three years, or I have a few students who are doubling up, so they would have two units in one year, and then they'd have a third unit another year. Um, and because we are, the, I'm already, the curriculum already follows the New York State standards, we are essentially already doing this. And so the IAAP is going to just recognize the work that the students are putting for, and it will, um, offer both or either, a graduation pathway, um, as well as like an endorsement of the right work. Oh, and I did, so a lot of, all the artwork in the slideshow is from our students, it was made last year, so you can enjoy that.
So I just want to take a quick minute to review, um, like graduation requirements, and I'm going to come down if this is a little easier. So every student needs to meet 22 credits, and that, that comes from completing a course, right? You've passed a course, 65 or higher, that's how we earn credits. So between ninth grade, well, sometimes including like foreign language, or if a kid is accelerated, it can start in eighth grade, through 12th grade, a student has to have 22 credits that they've completed. Also, in New York State, you have to have passed, so 65 or better, um, in English, which is like our English 11 Regents, math, which is typically Algebra 1, science, which tends to be biology, just because we have that first, um, as ninth grade, and then social studies, which is usually, um, our Global 2 Regents. Now, a lot of times, what will happen traditionally, most students will take a fifth assessment, which is that US History Assessment. Now, we find sometimes that's difficult for a student to pass, right? Um, so what New York State does is they've created different pathway options. So if you can't get over that fifth, uh, or you can't pass that fifth Regents exam, there's different pathways that will still keep you on track for graduation for either a local or a Regents diploma. So these are the different pathways that New York State says are available to you if you can't get through that fifth Regents exam. All of these check marks are what Hamilton already offers in terms of pathways. So I don't want to go into too much detail, but we have our Career and Technical Endorsement Pathway, um, so that could mean like a student is going to Bowses, but also remember, we have our in-house ag program, um, Ms. Foster's program is approved to give a CTE endorsement, um, similar, but not exactly the same as a CDOs pathway, um, which focuses a little bit more on like work-based learning, specific experiences, um, and career readiness. Um, we have a civics pathway, um, which I worked on actually with Mr. Jones a couple years ago. Um, and if you guys remember, like last year, um, Tinsay did his presentation, that was specifically for the civics pathway. Um, we have the humanities pathway, which is that traditional fifth, um, Regents exam that they take with US History, so that they're doubling up on two social studies exams. We have a STEM pathway, so if someone wanted to double up in math, they could do that instead. What we're focusing on though is the arts pathway, so, um, this individual arts assessment pathway requirement. So let's move to Hamilton.
Yes. So.
Oh, that's with me too. Okay. Um, so in a nutshell, kind of what I just described, that's how we can utilize this IAAP pathway right now as another avenue for students towards graduation, right? The, the goal is to have a lot of options and tools in my toolbox, but in every student's toolbox, to get them towards graduation, to get them over that finish line, okay? Um, but as we know, New York State is, um, moving towards these, um, new graduation requirements, um, where they're moving away from this like pathway requirement, or Regents requirements in general, the exams, um, and they're moving towards that one diploma type where you can then can add on endorsements, right? So those pathways also are endorsements. Um, so even though this arts pathway, um, or excuse me, the IAAP won't be considered a pathway, it still is considered an endorsement, which really is like the bulk of our kids who are working towards that are going to utilize it for. The endorsement pathway, um, or the endorsement on the diploma versus using it as a graduation pathway.
Um, so, uh, why offer the IAAP? Um, so the arts department, um, and program is growing, which I'm so happy about. I have a lot of really big classes, and it brings me a lot of joy, so thank you. Um, and we really want to place an emphasis on our students who, um, are focused on art and design and are, um, receiving, like making all of these achievements in the arts. So like Victoria said, it would, it's a great, like endorsement for them to kind of honor all the hard work that they've put through over the years, um, especially because it's this kind of process-based, uh, experience rather than an assessment like a Regents, Regents exam. Um, so we just want to represent all students and all of their strengths. Oh, look at, you do close.
Okay, so, um, just a little overview, like what our process looked like. So as Tori had said, you know, from the beginning, we went to, um, the professional development that was offered at Oneida, um, library, and we got to really hear specifically from the Oneida counselors and the arts department, like how this looks at Oneida.
And their superintendent actually was there as well.
We spent some time kind of trying to orient ourselves with what New York State required in terms of the IAAP, um, guidelines, um, and then really tried hard to like think, okay, we heard how it works at Oneida, and if you know, Oneida has a very robust, um, arts program. They have multiple staff, they have AP courses that they offer, and so we thought, how are we going to do this here with our one fabulous teacher? So how are we going to model this here, right? Um, we actually spent some time communicating with state ed, wondering if by implementing this program this year could be retroactive any of the art classes that students have taken maybe for like upperclassmen? Um, unfortunately, we can't, which is a little bit disappointing.
Yeah.
But from there, we went on and, um, got our approval to, um, begin the, the process through the, um, business portal.
Yep.
Um, which our administration and Jody helped us do that, so thank you. Um, and then we spent our time this summer really kind of putting the nuts and bolts together of how this is going to work within.
So we were trying to count, um, about how many kids were enrolled into art classes, into introductory art classes, um, and what's nice is any student who's in an introductory class is just going to be enrolled in the IAAP. So if you're a freshman this year, um, or even a sophomore, but it's your first art class, you will all start, they'll all start the Unit 1 IAAP. Um, and what's really nice is it's essentially just documenting the artwork you've made. So you're not making additional work just for this, you're documenting what you're doing, and you're writing, um, a short reflection on your process. Um, and what's nice is, so if I have a freshman this year who maybe doesn't take art their sophomore year, maybe not their junior year, but then all of a sudden is like, oh, you know, I would really like this endorsement, if they take two their senior year, or if they decide to do like one their junior, they can kind of skip and come back to it, and it will still be there. So if they change their minds, you know, or maybe they don't, um, pass the one Regents and they need it as a pathway. So that would be an option for them, and I wanted to just give every student that base in case whether or not they want to pursue it, it's there. So, yes.
So, um, really, we just created this visual to, um, help with communication to students and parents, um, about what the IAAP is. So you can see on the side here, like different, um, courses that we offer. So our introductory courses are already different, it's a little small. We have a Studio Art 1 course, um, or a digital photography and graphic design course, or an art and industry course. Year two, where we're looking a little closer at like exploration and growth, there's a Studio Art 2 class, or an advanced drawing and painting class. And then years three and four, so we're expanding on that art creation and personal exploration. There's a Studio 3, or a mixed media, or an option sometimes for like an independent study course. The, the great part is that like, you know, Tori's courses are already really well-aligned to what the IAAP, um, is asking, and so we just thought it would be helpful again in terms of like communication, um, to parents, because sometimes, right, um, we're not offering what we offered last year, things have changed, or a student maybe, um, if a class they took last year, um, doesn't fit in this year, um, but they want to be able to take it or they need it within their sequence. So the goal is really just to have some visuals to help with the communication.
Because sometimes they'll say, oh, I never took Studio 1, I can't take Studio 2. And I'll say, oh, no, you took digital photography, that is still an introductory course, and it would count as their Studio 1, so they could go into Studio 2 if they wanted, or if they, you know, if Studio 1 fits better in their schedule, or if they just would prefer to start from Studio 1, they can do that as well. So it just gives them some flexible prerequisites. Um, okay, so the IAAP timeline, we kind of talked about how we can't retroactively, um, bring student, like bring students into it who are too far into like their art sequence for graduation. So our anticipated first-year IAAP graduates will be the class of 2027, um, so we're going to implement Year 1 right now, so that's this year. Um, so Year 1 is really a declaration, and I actually decided to, um, and I think this is what they do at Oneida as well, it's essentially their final exam. So their final exam is this declaration of the IAAP pathway, and they are going to choose two or three artworks from their, um, that they've made throughout the year to establish their baseline, baseline of growth and experience. So they'll essentially, I'm going to have every student create, um, a Google site, and we'll talk about that more about like our organization, um, but the Google site will act as a way for them to document their work. So they'll be able to upload images of their work, text, um, they also have to have sketchbooks, so they'll upload images of their sketchbook to show their process. Um, and again, a declaration doesn't mean they need to continue, um, but Victoria and I are keeping track of everyone who is starting it, so like I said, if they change their mind in years to come, that's an option. So Year 2 again is, um, growth, like, you know, practice, growth, reflection, so they declare, uh, continued intent in the IAAP pathway, um, so they just can, they continue to save their artwork and reflective pieces for use in their portfolio. Um, and again, the curriculum that I created already aligns with the New York State standards, so it aligns with what the IAAP is requiring as well. So Year 3, um, is kind of that final portfolio, so they will assemble six to nine pieces at the end of the year, um, and that is going to be on their Google site, and it's really nice, I don't know if you know Google sites, like you can have different pages, but it's very easy to, um, like look through, it's user-friendly to, you know, find everything. Um, and this is where they'll, uh, create more of this portfolio reflection of like the years previous and like a culminating growth of how they've developed as artists, um, and as students. Um, and then that, so Year 3, they could submit for the Regents assessment, um, they could also do a Year 4, like capstone project, which I think is so cool, because I, I think of like, you know, with the, the big piece she's doing, like, it could be community-related, which would be so much fun, um, and it's really the individualized project that they would like kind of come up with on their own and how they, you know, want to demonstrate themselves as artists. So that would be really awesome, if I could have kids who are, you know, the Year 4, um, and they would like document, execute, assess, and reflect. So we created, um, so then we go, you know, so we're planning this summer, okay, this is Year 1, 2, and 3, how are we going to keep all this organized? That was like a big, that was like the scariest part, I think, because you've got all these names, and it's up to Victoria and I to keep track of who is doing this, what have they accomplished so far, and how are we going to store that information? Um, so I can click on a little pathway. So the. Oh, okay. Well.
That's okay.
Okay. I swear, or, so the, that is actually a Google site, so I'm so sad it's not working, because long will hold it, will look like. Um, that's okay. It's, so the student handbook is almost like, um, it's going to be, it'll have a sample Google site, so students will see exactly what a sample one looks like, um, that we, and I actually said, because we did make it the sample one, and it looks so good, but anyway. Um, so it'll be accessible to parents and to students who want to use it, um, via Google Sites, and that can be put through the kids' Google classrooms, so it'll be easy for them to see.
And, okay, other pieces? Oh, yeah. Um, so as Tori had mentioned, it will really be primarily her and I, we're tracking students' progress throughout the IAAP. Um, again, I'm appreciative for the work that I did with Mike, because, um, I, I was able to get my brain kind of going about how we want to track the seal civic readiness. So Tori already had like a spreadsheet model that I could use, um, to be able to track the IAAP as well. Um, that's that second, um, resource there, that portfolio checklist. I won't pull it up because it's got student name on it, but, um, it's every single year's cohort, um, who we anticipate to potentially graduate, um, with this endorsement. Um, so it'll be something we check in on, um, with each year. There's also information on there about like, um, what does a student need to do each year within the class to make sure that they're meeting the requirements for each year? I think our Google site is up there for one.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what, if it were, I hope it works. Okay. Um, because it was so, it was so good. Yay! Oh, look at the name, ME9. So the main, the front of there, the homepage is going to be the whole portfolio in the portfolio title, and then, um, so it'll be like a carousel, which is nice. So Year 1, you would have like what art course you took, what projects you did, and then you would, you write in like evidence of your growth, so that's like your reflections. Um, and you can actually write, or, yeah, okay, yeah, definitely, if you type on Google Sites, sometimes it does lose it, so I tell kids to write on a Google Doc. Um, you also have to have, so an artist statement, and you have to have your sketchbook, which the students are always like, why do I have to do this? I'm like, it's evidence of your process, we have to document it. And I just think documenting is like, um, such a big thing in like the work world anyway, so I'm trying so hard to get the kids to like have the habit of documenting the things that they do. Oops, sorry. And then actually, oh, so they get to do, um, an evaluation of themselves, which I think is really wonderful, and then I do an evaluation, um, and then we kind of talk about both at the end. And so Year 2 is very similar, um, I actually think it might be exactly the same. Oh, we, oh, actually, no, because we do a small group critique, and they have to insert a copy of their, um, critique sheet just to represent, like there's a standard where they should know how to talk about art constructively, um, and also like meaningfully. So that was the difference of Year 2. And then Year 3, they will, so this is an in-depth peer critique, we love that, and it's where they'll work really closely with, um, talking about somebody's work and, you know, analysis, interpretation, and evaluation. And then again, you've got the final reflection and evaluation. So you've got all of your evidence, plan, practice, experiment, revision, um, and then, oops, sorry, and then you can either link or copy and paste like your portfolio reflection and all that stuff, so. So fun, and then the capstone project is optional, and that is where you would, you know, there are so many cool, like doing a mural in town, I mean, wouldn't that be so fun? So we're very excited. Um, so, yes, okay, sorry, I will return.
Yeah. Just more information, more resources that we utilized, um, to help kind of plan this process, and that we'll continue to lean on throughout the upcoming years.
Yeah, 100%. But actually, and what was nice is I just went to a PLG in, um, October, and the, another teacher from another district, and I wish I could remember which one it was, he had presented on his implementation, um, and he also used Google Sites. So it was nice to know, that's kind of what I think most districts are utilizing, is like the documenting. And what's nice is in Victoria's spreadsheets, you can just link a Google site right next to a student's name. So like if I can say, oh, you know, so-and-so did this, there are things right here, and it doesn't go away. It stays forever. So, yes.
Hey, thank you. Thank you all for our good support, we appreciate it.
Yes.
Oh, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's very exciting to see that you, Victoria, are so far ahead of these standards that we know are coming our way, um, and that the state is starting to push in, into these new, um, not Regents, but these new avenues, right? And so the fact that, um, you have started to take steps with the teachers to. take steps with the teachers to create these pathways so that Hamilton is suited in a good spot for when the state finally tells us what we need to do, which never happens, but, but at least we're a step ahead in some, in some fashion, so thank you for being a step ahead for as much as you can with New York State, and I really appreciate that. And for the teachers that are taking those steps, I mean, with everything the teachers are doing, they are, but especially in these cases for the pathways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am standing up here with you all.
I'm so excited.
And those will be great. Okay, so, I might start us off. So again, actually, Heather Jerelou, because I love you so much, years ago, I, Ryan Vane and I actually took a group of kids, Oneida had offered for us to join them, to Boston. So we did this overnight trip, I think we had maybe like eight kids, it wasn't a lot, but we were with a big group of Oneida, and then we kind of had our little Hamilton group, and we went to Boston, and it was like the coolest thing ever. And if I've seen Maddie Merck, she still is like, "Do you remember us from Boston?" And I'm like, "Yes," because it was so amazing. And like, for the kids to go to these museums and see artwork that's just like vast and huge, or like, see, you know, Starry Night on the Wall, for the, like, in real life rather than, you know, they're like, "It looks kind of small," and I'm like, "I know, it is small." It was just like the most amazing experience. And then the year after Boston, we went to New York City, we got to see Wicked on Broadway, and I mean, it was literally the best, it was so cool. Other than the kids in New York, I'm like, "My God, I can't remember where I went." So that was pre-COVID, and so it just has seemed like, since then, we haven't had this opportunity to go on a big trip. So when I thought about it, I was like, "I'd really love a group of, like, Hamilton kids, I think we could do it, I think we can have the numbers." So I went to Mike last spring, and I'm like, "How do you feel about planning a trip with me over the summer?" So we could go to New York City with our kids. And what's really awesome is Mike is really passionate about art as well, and history, and I just, I'm also passionate about how art has represented history and how history has represented art. So we work together to make this happen. So again, sorry, so our why was really that we wanted to give these kids this real-life experience that, you know, that they could get from going to New York City. Some of our kids have never been to New York City, and I want them to learn museum etiquette and expectations, see real-life historical artifacts and art pieces that they've only ever seen digitally, and to learn and exhibit, like, responsibility and maturity in these, you know, bigger areas outside of our community. They'll manage money, and they'll just get an opportunity to experience the world beyond Hamilton. So I was like, you know, so excited. So our goal is to inspire our students and give them an exciting and fun educational experience, visiting two of the country's largest museums that bridge the gap between visual arts and history. So we really want students to see firsthand how these two things come together and have worked together since, like, the dawn of time.
Okay, cool. First, we'll note, and kind of echo what Tori mentioned earlier, when I was a student here at Hamilton, we got an opportunity to go to the New York City, a New York City trip, you know, getting to eat soul food at Sylvia's in Harlem, and going to see the great George Wendt play Trixie Turnerland's mother in Hairspray, we went to a Blue Man Group concert, and got back on the bus and drove home, got back at like maybe three or four in the morning, all to, you know, wake up and go to school the next day. But it was, it was incredible experience, and it was honestly one of the most memorable and fun things that I did as a student here. And to be able to provide that, or hopefully be able to provide that for our students would be just an awesome, awesome experience all the way around. What I particularly loved about what Tori's vision was, and jumping on board with this, was kind of disguising the academics in what is going to otherwise just be like a totally fun trip. I use, I don't, personally, I use art every single day when teaching history, you know, we just start with, like, an image on the board, whether it's a painting describing some important Greek myth, for example, or looking at sculpture, or just a piece of technology that has now taken on, like, more artistic sort of characterization. I love using art and implementing art, I find myself always in Tori's room, looking at the students' art and just talking art. You know, Tori inspires me every day to become a better teacher, and, oh, I really truly mean that. So it's really wonderful to finally get an opportunity to work with her, and having to have the opportunity to do it this summer, it was really, really fun. So, a lot of, you know, big decisions that were made at first, we kind of just, you know, got all of our thoughts out onto a Google Doc, and then we, mostly Tori admittedly, was like, "Okay, how are we going to organize this?" Right? So the first thing was thinking, like, who is going? Because if we just offer this trip to everybody in the school, you know, we might get 80, 90 students who are like, "I want to go to New York City, I want to miss school and go to the city." So we really kind of narrowed our focus as to who we wanted to be included in this trip, and to obviously provide opportunity for students who, you know, seem really excited about this and would love to have the opportunity to go to a couple of museums. So we were thinking kind of like folks from Anthropology Club last year, as well as from Art Club End and different art classes, to kind of be our sort of target audience, so to speak, and also just people who, you know, would love to learn more about culture and experience a culture outside that of Hamilton, go into New York, which is a very, very different place, obviously, and being able to look at some of the most incredible, you know, art and artifacts and just pieces of history in the world. I use the Metropolitan Museum of Art website constantly. There's amazing resources on that website, and it's just like, man, it's insane to think, like, our students can actually go here and see, like, the insignia of Suleiman the Magnificent, instead of me just, like, projecting it onto the Pantheon Board. So, so think about where we're going, we were tentatively thinking about April, that gives us time for fundraising opportunities, which we'll talk a little bit more about. Fundraising is going to be obviously a big piece of this. We already talked to the great Ryan Vane.
Yes, Ryan Vane's driving us.
Yeah, Ryan Vane. We were sitting there, we're thinking, okay, like, charter bus and like hotels, like, ooh, it's a little old road, we'll call Vane. So we called Ryan, and he just like laid out everything. He went, "We're going to do this, this, that, don't stay in the city, stay in Jersey, because there's more of a discount there, it's easier to get the bus in and out." So he was, you know, thinking about all these things that we didn't even, didn't even come across our minds. So Vane did huge research.
We also did talk about, we narrowed it to 11th and 12th graders, and we thought it would be nice if this was a tradition that, it might not be able to happen every year, but if we could have it every other year, then it would, you know, not skip over anybody. So that was a big yes.
And might help with the fundraising piece as well, because we'd have two, you know, years to be able to fundraise.
I did find a hotel that took us, I'm so sorry.
No, please.
So I did find a hotel, and so, you know, we're like, "Oh, let's do this, oh, we'll take a hail bus, oh, we'll stay at this hotel, oh, let's go to a Broadway show, we love that for us." So then I go and talk to my lovely administrators, and I'm like, "Here's my plan, I just need the money." That didn't go over super great. So we ideally were, like, calculating costs was like, whoa. So I really wanted to, the Broadway show thing was just so cool when we went, so I go, "Oh, I really want to go to a Broadway show." So I got up pricing for The Great Gatsby, which a lot of the kids are reading.
I know.
So, but I wrote, so we talked a lot about fundraising, we really want this trip to be financially accessible for all of our students, and we really want to keep the cost down for families to like $200 or less, for like students individually to pay. We're hoping less. So some plans, I did write, we did an Emerald Grant to, for The Great Gatsby, so we're waiting to hear back on the Emerald Foundation. And then, the Museum of Natural History has free admission, I, and then we, like, looked that up, but then the Met Museum of Art, it was $12 per student. So that wasn't a huge thing, the biggest costs are obviously transportation and hotel. So Mike had the great idea of the Hamilton Inn.
Oh, yeah, possibly. So my brother-in-law owns and operates the Hamilton Inn, so he did this really great thing with, it was called Raiders as Waiters, and they did this awesome thing where the hockey team, Ben's Hockey Team at Colgate, where it was the waitstaff at the restaurant. So I was hopefully thinking that maybe we'd be able to figure something out where we might be able to have members of Art Club, 11th and 12th graders possibly doing something similar in order to raise money. And all that money was donated to the food cupboard, but this would be going to hopefully our New York City trip. So we still need to figure out and coordinate things with Michael regarding that, but Mike is an extremely generous and wonderful person, so hopefully he's listening to this. So it'd be great if that, if that could pan out.
He also had, like, two type D people with ADHD doing this list, by the way, it's like, it takes 10 days for like...
Oh, in addition, one other thing, we realized that cost is, you know, a bit prohibitive at this point regarding, you know, exactly what this is going to look like in the end. We've also had a couple of Plan B options that were either free or significantly less expensive. So, for example, Governor's Island is like a really wonderful, like, outdoor area where there's a lot of different activities and things going on. Students can, like, kind of walk around, there's games, restaurants that are relatively inexpensive on the island as well. So we do have some other options in case things like the Broadway show might not pan out. The museums are obviously the big feature here, but I mean, it would be wonderful to be able to incorporate those other things as well, so.
Oh, sorry. So we did kind of narrow down after all of our ADHD-ness, the, like, kind of tentative itinerary. So we had an interest meeting, and we had over 40 students sign up in interest. So our anticipated attendance is about 40, like, maybe up to 45. Our plan is to depart HDS on Friday, April 4, in the morning, and return Saturday in the evening. And then, like I said, I'm kind of a weirdo, so I would really like to just keep the meals to, like, large groups. So there was one restaurant we reached out to who couldn't take us, but there's a few other ones that we reached out to, so we're hoping, like, "I just want to keep us together." So like I said, plans continue to develop as we kind of figure out, hear back from, like, an Emerald, you know, the Emerald Grant, or how much our fundraising kind of gets us. And then, oh, this is the fun part, too. So we decided that it would be really awesome, again, documentation. The kids are going to, we'll, you can create one Google Site, and like I showed you, it has the pages. So we're going to have one Google Site, and each student who attends will get a page, and they will make a visual journal to include, like, images and written reflections about their experience that can be shared with everyone. So I thought that would be a really great, like, way to just, like, remember what they did, and then, I just think when you're somewhere, you're so busy, and you can jot down a few things, like, on the bus or whatever, and then you look back on it, it's just so nice.
Yeah, be a really cool artifact for them to look back and reflect on. And, you know, like, as Tori was presenting earlier, I was kind of thinking about, you know, being able to bridge the gap between our two areas of expertise, and just looking at some of the things that you were discussing, like, evaluate, describe, identify, like, those are the words that we use in history all the time. So like, if we're really trying to bridge the gap and be more interdisciplinary, and not necessarily teach in silos, so to speak, I think that this visual journal requirement is a really cool way to kind of show what you've learned, and more importantly, have kids just reflect on, you know, their experience. And it'll be fun for us to be able to share with, you know, the group, "Hey, guys, like, this is what we did two years ago, this is what we could do this year." So I think this is a really, really awesome way, and again, kind of disguising the academics in it all. Show us the pictures you took, you know, like, write about some of the cool things that you saw in the museum. "Oh, my God, I saw a Georgia O'Keeffe painting, I've never seen that before." So these are, like, some of the cool, interesting ways that students can reflect and show what they've learned.
And to see it through their eyes, like, what did they love, you know, and I just, so, I'm super excited. So, yes, questions or suggestions if you're a big NYC person? No budget.
Or donations?
Do you need chaperones?
It's like, we gotta, you know, kill it, everyone go, "I have teachers coming up, are you good or yours?" So, yes, I know, it's a five, but I want, actually, so we, so Mrs. Wayland will be joining us, and then we talked about an additional history teacher, I don't know if it was Mrs. Faith or Mr. Center, I don't know. Mike's got to pick which one. So, yes, but if you have other suggestions, too, that you want to email or anyone listening about New York City and things, we would love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has Google Sites now replaced scrapbooking?
It must. But again, I'm obsessed, I do, I, because I'm like, "Document, document," so I'm like, yes.
That's been fun, yeah.
And it's nice, because it could be, we actually usually use Google Sites during the art show, and like, my media arts kids have put their stuff on there, too, so that's really fun.
Well, thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will just take, like, a minute or so break, if you guys, since you've been here all day long, would like to go home. You're more than welcome, you are welcome to stay, of course, we would never want to kick you out, but if you'd like to go home and see your families. Thank you for your time that you put into the presentations.
Yeah.
Thank you for the time and for all that you do for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a really big takeaway, too, like, all of you are so, like, excited about all the projects that you were doing, and that's really exciting for at least me to see also, so.
I think the best part about these presentations, not only to show us what you do and the love that you share with, with the students every day, but also to be able to share with the community if and when people watch the video, so that people can understand what happens inside the building, right? Like, we aren't here every day, we hear some things depending on which students talk to which parents, right? I have one talk there, one not. And so, you know, it depends on, on what you get sent home and what things you hear, so being able to hear what you guys do and the time and energy that you put into our students is really, really wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mark and Heather, you are all welcome to exit as well.
I think that's ready.
We're going to keep Madison?
I told, yes, she's here for a little while.
Okay.
Not long, not too much. Next up is community participation. If anybody would like to come up and participate in our meeting, you are welcome to. I was just looking online, that's where my hesitation was. All I heard was, all I can see is Throwback, and Josh is here, too, and I don't know what that means, so.
Is that on the athletics stuff?
No, maybe. So, seeing nobody come to the front, we will move on. We're on to new business and personnel. I need a motion to approve the resignation of Heather Vigera as attendance aide effective October 24th, as recommended by the superintendent, with sincere appreciation for services rendered to the district.
I'll move, a second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the resignation of Jessica LaFrance as teacher aide effective October 25th, as recommended by the superintendent. Resignation is contingent upon the approval of her new role as attendance aide effective October 28.
We'll move.
So, discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the volunteer is presented by the recommendate, recommended, come up, Ellen Angler.
Angler.
Motion to approve.
Yep.
Ellen Angler as a volunteer.
Yeah, as a volunteer.
As a volunteer, as recommended by the administrative team and superintendent, sorry.
Move.
Second. Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve Ruth Stillwagon as an additional, as addition to the substitute list and authorizing her to volunteer as desired, as recommended by the administrative team and superintendent.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
And in a motion to approve the appointment of Jessica LaFrance as probationary part-time attendance aide, effective October 28th, as outlined in the recommendation form and recommended by the superintendent.
Come on.
Second.
Any discussion? Just the part-time part.
Yes, part-time, but it says one PTE.
Yeah, it says.
Full-time.
But it says full-time.
Should be full-time attendance aide, full-time, 10 months, it's 10 months.
All right, so to clarify that, it's a 10-month position.
Yep, which is full-time.
Do we have to amend it, or, okay. All those in, we did, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to approve the appointment of Sonia Ferner as a probationary part-time teacher aide, bus aide, effective November 15th, as outlined in the recommendation form and as recommended by the director, PPS, and superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion would be in executive session, all Any discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the appointment of Sarah Garcia as a probationary part-time teacher bus aide, teacher aide, bus aide, effective November 15th, as outlined in the recommendation form and as recommended by the director of PPS and superintendent.
Move.
Second. Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor? Aye. A motion to approve the appointment of Olivia Coroli as a long-term substitute school counselor with tentative effective dates of December 9th through June 22nd, as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent.
Come on. Second.
Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor? Aye. A motion to approve the appointment of Carly Murray as a long-term substitute physical education teacher with tentative effective dates of December 16th through March 10th, as recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent. Second. Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor? Aye. A motion to approve the recommendation of the committees on special education and preschool special education?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion would be in executive session, all those in favor? Aye. A motion to approve the Hamilton's participation in the following combined sports programs for 2024-2025 school year is recommended by the athletic coordinator and superintendent. Girls varsity lacrosse with Casanova, tentatively one student, and swimming with Sherburne Earlville, tentatively two students.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Just all three students, if they are not.
Is there any reason why those are two separate items, like the indoor varsity track and then those?
Yes, so indoor track, their bylaws don't allow combining, it's called a partnership.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
All those in favor for combined?
Aye.
Aye. A motion to approve Hamilton's partnership with Waterville Central School District for the 24-25 indoor varsity track season is recommended by the athletic coordinator and superintendent.
Move.
Tentatively four students. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
A motion to accept the following monetary donations with sincere appreciation and increase the budget by these amounts as recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
I'll move.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. A motion to surplus excess equipment as provided and that is deemed unusable and to discard the items that cannot be sold through public sale as recommended by the business manager and superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I couldn't tell from the documentation, how many years did we get out of these devices?
I don't know for sure.
There's a lot on there. There are a lot.
It seems like most of them were two, many times.
A lot of Chromebooks.
The Chromebooks.
iPods.
iPods can look there for twenty.
Chris would.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-eight.
Quite a few years, yeah, we can ask Chris.
All those in favor? Aye. I had to remember where I was. A motion to approve the SUNY Brock for dual credit course natural disasters, E S C 195, overnight trip scheduled for Friday, February 7th to Sunday, February 9th, as provided and recommended by the secondary principal and superintendent. The Board of Education does reserve the right to cancel the trip if circumstances arise concerning the safety of the students.
I'll move.
Second. Discussion? So it's fun to have a wonderful time, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. That does bring us to information and correspondence, so you are welcome to stay, it's another like point of the meeting, but if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to, and if you'd like to leave, we won't be offended, except for Cory, he has to stay. That brings us to the superintendent's report.
Just a couple of things in addition to my written report, the Board of Regents' November meeting, some things that were discussed were the, we heard tonight about the different pathways for the Blue Ribbon Commission. They have now put out some timelines for implementation that will be presented to the board in June, so Phase One would be the planning year, which is now, that's the planning year, sorry. Phase One would be installation, which starts fall 2025 through summer of 2027. Phase Two will be initial implementation, which would be fall 2027 through summer of 29, and then Phase Three would be full implementation of all the pathways, fall of 2029, moving forward. Obviously, these have to be approved by the Board of Regents', and they've also put out a timeline for cohorts, diploma requirements for cohorts. So a cohort is when you enter ninth grade, so the cohort of 2023 would be a graduation year of 2027. So those are all outlined, I included that in the written report, but I just wanted to verbally make you aware of, the Board of Regents did discuss this, they are looking at implementation, they will vote on this in future meetings, so it is moving forward, so, which is a good thing. They also approved, gave emergency approval to the new regulations for A P P R, which again, is a wonderful thing. That went into law in June, but there's a sixty-day comment period that they're now involved in. The department anticipates submitting the regulations to the Board of Regents' for permanent adoption in March. So we'll continue to work with the HTA, we met last year periodically to start talking about what our new A P P R plan would look like internally. We'll start those meetings now that the emergency regulation has been put into effect and start planning for hopefully implementation next year, but we'll see how that works out with the Board of Regents', if they do in fact approve the emergency regulation, regulation. Regionalization, we've talked about this a lot, there is some pushback to that law that was written now from a group in Downstate, is pushing back on, what does that exactly mean? Are districts going to be forced to regionalize services with neighboring districts? That's what some people Downstate are reading this new law as. The Regents, Regent Tillis has verbally said that is not the intent of the law. The intent of the law is to have discussions and then locally, boards will have the decision-making power to either move into a regionalization plan with a neighboring district or not. So there's some confusion right now on what the intent of the law is and how the law is written, so more to come with that, but there are a lot of discussions statewide, Jen, I know you.
I know it's been a while.
I know you've heard about it at state level for advocacy, so.
Well, at last year's school board convention, I made connection with that group, so I've joined a couple of meetings, but now because I'm on that list, like the water that's going around and then devised and getting other boards and literally, it's like two in the morning, three in the morning, like they're really going non-stop with us.
Yeah, yeah.
But Bill, in our region, does that seem to be that there, do any other superintendents share that concern that there's?
No, no, our regional meetings, to this point, we've had two conversation meetings about regionalization and Scott Budelman, the district superintendent for MLBOS, has been very clear, this is just discussion, it's kind of a brainstorming on how we can share services to meet the needs of students, and that's where we're at. Nothing's being mandated or forced on us at this time, and I don't foresee that within our region. I think it's good conversation right now on how we can do things differently and meet the needs of students regionally.
And we've thought about this type of stuff in the past anyway, it seems like there's just more opportunities to.
And we're doing things, you know, as a region, you know, it's just a matter of looking at it further and are there more things that we can be doing?
Would this, these discussions also come with increased avenues for making that possible, either through funding or other resources or?
That's what we're hopeful, we're hoping for that, because, you know, Matt will share with you in a minute, you know, the continued state budget outlook is not positive, and we have to, we have to look regionally on how to share resources, how to share expertise, do things differently, think outside of the box, to meet the needs of students, because it's going to become harder and harder if the state continues to hold money from districts. We just can't continue with that model. So that's the latest updates from the Board of Regents' meeting in early November.
Thanks, thank you. Any extra questions for Bill at this time? Any questions regarding the administrative reports?
No.
Athletic report?
So I just want to highlight, if I can, you know, Mr. Arquette talked about the both soccer teams, our volleyball team had another wonderful season, so they went to the semifinals, they took the eventual, am I right, Madison? Lafayette won the section?
Yes.
They took the eventual sexual champion to five sets, had opportunity to win that match, unfortunately, a couple of things didn't go our way, but they had a wonderful season and they need to be recognized for that and I'm very proud of them because, you know, they represented themselves and Hamilton Central very, very well this season. And our cross-country team also had a wonderful season, a number of runners advanced to the section meet, performed very well, set some personal records, so, you know, all of our fall teams had terrific seasons, so very proud of all of them.
Thank you to all the students who are always representing Hamilton in the best way possible, ask about, it really is wonderful to see on and off the field how they behave.
It is.
In our district.
Yeah, we're very fortunate that our coaches, our in-house coaches and the time and energy they put in to help our student athletes, I think needs to be recognized as well because collectively, it makes a difference.
For sure. That brings us to Matt.
I don't have much.
Okay.
Budget-wise, nothing, the state and the health is not great. We expect to hear something hopefully before the next board meeting regarding the foundation aid periods that would help with some of us. With our budget calendar not complete, we'll go on, we'll ramp up meetings and we'll start having discussions internally. Have we prepared for next year already? It doesn't seem possible, but it seems to be getting earlier and earlier as you start. That'll be very fluid as far as the budget calendar goes, as far as our public meetings and what we do publicly here in our community, the dates that are set as far as the vote and looking back at the South Africa circuit online, we don't have flexibility with the local meetings that we have, we have flexibility, we'll be looking at that as we move through the process. I was hoping to have an update anytime about electric school buses, I don't, I reached out directly to Polera for an update and not here back. The last time I spoke with them, they were very overwhelmed with the number of districts that they're working with and trying to conduct these fleet studies as the first step, which we've completed, and the electrification studies in providers and municipalities as the second step. So that's where we are, I don't have an update at this point. And then the last is this capital project, nothing related to work. Our next planning meeting is next Wednesday with the architecture committee. Bill and I are still cautiously optimistic in working towards a May of 2025 vote, so if we continue to target that, we're gonna have to really narrow our scope and it'll be a heavy lift on our end to really prepare what that project's gonna look like and prepare this community if we're gonna have that vote in May, so we're tentatively still working towards that, and a good change I guess after our meeting next week, that's where we're at.
Great, thank you. Our student board member has been excused for the night because he is at practice since he has a game tomorrow, so to him, we thank him for wanting to be here, however, his place tonight is not at the table, it's on the field, so.
I can give you a little insight into what his report was going to be and what it will be in December, so he is surveying the student body on a number of questions that relate to the Blue Ribbon Commission on electives and pathways, you know, what electives are we offering now, are they still relevant, would students like to see anything different, AP courses versus dual credit, just trying to gather feedback from students, which I think will be really helpful and interesting for us as we do look at these different pathways to help us formal thinking.
Nice.
Yeah.
Knowledge sharing, elementary steering committees?
We have had two meetings, one today and one a few weeks ago, so I've got, let's see, the first thing, this was from October, was they did send out a survey to teachers, a smartwatch survey, and how distracting cell phones, but more so smartwatches at elementary level, whether it's causing a problem in classrooms, there haven't been too many referrals, and the gist of the survey is it's not really a problem. There was talk about whether they should be made to keep their watches in their lockers or their backpacks in their lockers, whether the teachers should collect them, but you know, there's only been a real handful of incidents, so they're gonna keep an eye on it, and some of the states, if anything comes down from the state, then we'll have to change then, but just to, you know, keep doing a survey, you know, once a year or whatever to keep an eye on that. But at this point, they're gonna revisit it annually, but there's not really, there's not really anything to do in that regard now. She also started the principals advisory committee at elementary level and loves it, so lots of good student feedback. This kind of ties into like the information that she's been getting from here, there was a big discussion in this advisory committee about the cafeteria and the noise level, which kind of feeds into this month's meeting, so I'll talk more about that in a minute. But also recess, you know, Mr. West is out there at recess and really, you know, one of the things that came up at the student advisory committee is making sure that students can use the fields as well as the playground, and then sometimes like upper, like elementary weren't allowed to use the playground, I think, because there weren't enough staff and they wanted to still go to the playground even though the younger kids were going there, but those are the things that she hears about from the students and then works to find resolutions, so that was good. And they also did a panel with some students, Colgate athletes and the principals advisory committee, they had an assembly just on sportsmanship and how to kind of, how good sportsmanship at recess specifically, but they had a whole assembly about that, but it was, you know, per committee and then our student athletes and then some rugby players, so, and it was all student-led by the committee. This week, this month, we had some, there's one of the parents that's on the steering committee is involved in fundraising and grant writing, I think, at Colgate, and he has, we've been talking for a little while about trying to go out to the community foundation for community grants, and so we're looking at doing that, to do something about the noise levels in the cafeteria, because it's really hard for people to hear each other talking, for them to have conversations, it's hard too for cafeteria staff to be able to hear lunch orders because the lines are so loud. So we're kind of trying to write, or Heather's gonna reach out and talk about writing a grant to get something done about the cafeteria noise levels. Maybe it's about maybe creating, you know, smaller seating arrangements, you know, more mixed seating instead of all long tables and a few of those bigger round tables, so stuff like that, or maybe some acoustical panels that we can hang from the ceiling or on the walls or something like that. So we're kind of in the beginning stages of researching that and getting input from students and teachers and staff about what the problems are, because it's kind of, you know, it's the gathering place for the whole school and it's a constant problem for all grade levels, so it could be a good opportunity to get some funding to do something with that, so that's exciting, we're gonna keep working on that.
Great, thank you. The secondary steering met on Tuesday, they were reviewing the student code of conduct again, just as a fresh set of eyes, it's a new committee this year, so looking at what was done last year, making sure there's no more adjustments, bringing anything that they have to Mark before it moves along. And then we talked about the Blue Ribbon Commission, the pathways and just getting an understanding of what that means and how the dual credit classes that we have are working for the students with the two students that are on the committee, getting their input and talking a little bit about that, so it was a very interesting meeting and we'll keep digging in, again, we've, I think we're. Again, we've, I think we're hitting like half the group both times that we've met, so we're still waiting for the whole group to be together. And because everybody is new in the room except for Mark, we're moving a little bit slower than I think, you know, we kind of hoped for, but I think that's the beginning of a year with the new committee. So I'm sure we'll pick up the pace and start doing some other things soon. But we're having good meetings, so. Inclusivity?
Inclusivity meeting had a great start for this academic year. We spent the majority of the time talking about the climate survey from last academic year and just reviewing some of the questions that came out of that about bullying, safety, and how those things will inform our action plan. So that discussion is going to be ongoing. We spent a little time talking about the code of conduct, just as an action item. The participants will spend some time reading through and giving feedback. Also, Bill, I'm going to ask for your help to talk about the mosaic project, but just real briefly, Mrs. Merk sort of presented on the mosaic project that she's working on with high school students. Just real quick, what the acronym stands for is mutual respect, open mindedness, self-respect, attitude, individuality, community. And it sounds like we have some students who are interested in that.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, we talked a lot last year about belonging and making our school more inclusive to all. And one of the ideas that came out of those meetings and part of the action plan was to form a group that is comfortable coming together and talking about and identifying opportunities for growth within our school to make our school more inclusive. And one of the projects, it was from NISBA, when we went in Rochester, Aranda Coy High School does a mosaic club. And that's your club that's all-inclusive to everybody. Anybody can be a member. It's a group that is interested in creating an atmosphere where everybody belongs. And so Renee has taken this upon herself to lead the group. And they had their first meeting and there's a lot of interest. So that group will continue to grow and have meetings and identify what types of activities they want to get involved in and what they can do within our school to make it more inclusive to all.
What age group is that?
That is middle school, high school.
Wonderful. Thank you. Advocacy?
We had our NISBA annual business meeting. Thirty-seven new resolutions were adopted. They're, this was, this was interesting to me. So they, NISBA is launching, they're getting ready to launch an in-district legislative challenge. So basically it says this December, NISBA will be launching its first ever in-district legislative challenge. The challenge will last for two months and is open exclusively for NISBA advocacy liaisons. Advocacy is most effective when personal connections have been made with policymakers prior to meetings in Albany and Washington DC. So basically this challenge is going to encourage school boards to form local connections with our policymakers. They have not announced what the prize is going to be at, but they're saying that it could be quite an incentive to the district. So basically the challenge is, more specifics are going to be coming out with the guidelines, but within a two-month period, liaisons and their boards are challenged to meet with local policymakers from the state assembly, state senate and congress. All the meetings have to be in person. The advocacy liaison must attend and other board members and superintendents are encouraged to also be involved. And it says that we can invite them just to attend like school activities, tour our schools, participate in an event or meet privately. And basically it's to like build relationships and we have to share like photos and descriptions after each meeting and things. So more will be coming on that and I will probably need some partnership. I like to win things, so I will let you know when I have more details on that.
Because it has more foundation aid?
Wouldn't that be nice? So we'll see. December third at noon is the 2025 legislative preview webinar. So basically that's to hear NISBA's analysis of the political environment and what it might mean for us. I've asked Jody to register me and that is online, so I encourage as many people to attend as possible. The annual Capitol conference is virtual this year, that's February seventh. And then the NISBA annual lobby day, which is in-person at the Capitol, is February twelfth. So lots of stuff happening because of the state of what Matt said. Like it's not looking good for us and NISBA is really pushing districts to start individually advocating as well.
Next up is board discussion. I actually really think that I left that on the agenda from last month, but I was thinking that we could talk quickly about the fact that Jen and I went to the NISBA conference in New York City. We spent two days, two and a half days in conference. We attended probably eight to ten sessions apiece. None of them did we go to together, because we tried to spread out and make sure we hit everything. I also did not tell Jen we were going to discuss this, nor did I prepare.
I brought my notebook in case, but.
Oh, I didn't. So mine's on my chair in my office at home. So we will put some notes together. We did copy down all the slides from the presentations into a drive, which we can share with everybody. It was a good conference. It was a, it was a good use of our time, we thought. We, the general sessions were interesting.
Sophia the robot, I will say, like I was very like intrigued about that and it was really creepy.
It was an AI robot and so she was interviewed by a human and she answered, but.
A couple of the responses were interesting though about the cell phones. She did not agree with like the statewide ban per se and how we, you know, AI is very good and devices are very good. And so that response was really interesting.
But for me, like it was hard because I didn't know, did she get the questions ahead of time? Was she pre-programmed for the answers or was she not? I don't think she was. I think that was the point of the AI presentation, right?
But she was looking at them and making funny faces when you were joking.
So quickly and have like really good answers. It felt like they were pre-recorded, but that's what AI does, right? Like it comes up with information really quickly. She did make a couple of jokes, which was a little bit freaky that she could joke at the same time and she had clothes on, but only like.
But she didn't have hair. Like she had all these like. Like she had these, like her bones and stuff, like her collarbones and stuff, she didn't have hair. And her hands were like all.
Robotic.
Yeah, robotic.
So it was very interesting.
What does she do? Does she teach? She would do whatever you want her to do. She was coming up with stuff.
To show how AI can.
But she was walking and.
Be beneficial in life and how it has, has changed through time.
The mobile computer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went to the leadership conference. They just wanted to build a lot of awareness around AI. So they knew that AI down in the future, down the road will affect education in some way.
She definitely did say that she was not going to take over for teachers in the classroom. Like, like that is not like the point of it, right? But like there were some jokes of like she could curtail and help and I'm like, I don't know.
It was just, you know, building awareness.
Yeah.
Did they get pictures and stuff with their after and I was like, no, she like hurt me out.
It was weird.
It was interesting.
It was interesting. But anyways, it was a good session, so there's our, there's the board discussion topic of the night.
Robots.
Robots.
I mean, in addition to that, we did both attend the session with Betty Rosa.
Forget about that one.
Which I felt, actually felt that went fairly well.
She showed up, which was the first step, we weren't sure.
That was huge.
Right? We always wondered like, is the person going to come or is she going to send a representative? And she was there.
And she did have somebody with her that actually Bill knows.
So the sessions were good. They were well thought out. They were not sales pitches like they have been some in the past. So they've definitely done a lot of makeovers in their sessions. So it was, it was a good, it was a good trip. We learned a lot and I've shared one thing with Mark already and, you know, we'll start to share things out. I just have not had time to think about it since we've been back. So I will work on getting that to you guys.
We went through and put all the slides, even the slides from the sessions we didn't attend. It was a pain because they all had to be renamed, but I felt really ambitious one day and I just went through and renamed them all, so they are the name of the sessions now and look at that shared out. And then what I can do too is take my notes, I'll just take pictures of my notes and put them in the applicable slides so you can see and then any questions or whatever maybe we can do next month or something.
Thank you. And that takes us to our general community participation. I don't see any online. I don't see anybody jumping to the podium. No? Okay. So we will be going into an executive session when we come out. We will not be voting, so we will not come back online. We thank everybody that was in the room tonight and especially those four of you that stayed. We appreciate you all. And again, thank you for the teacher presentations. It's always lovely to see what they use their time for in the summer, but really the love that you all have for the students. It really shines, so thank you.
Thank you.
I made a motion to adjourn and enter into executive session for matters pertaining to the following: collective negotiations, current ongoing litigation and employment history of particular persons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'd like to call for a five to ten-minute resend. Thank you.
This thing has not turned on.
Thank you, guys.
Amanda Song, Corey. I brought like a little bag, we did collect a ton of stuff, but I brought, I don't want the bag and I don't want anything in it.